All the order and roll call, please.
Commissioner De Vries?
Here.
Sheriff Frederickson?
Here.
Commissioner Goss?
Here.
Commissioner Hunsicker?
Here.
Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
And Vice Chair Shores?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
Everyone stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item was approval of a minute at our regular meeting of April 10th, 2018.
Move to approve if submitted.
One second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll need a roll call vote on this, Andy, or are we gonna...
Yes, I guess we do. Okay, Commissioner De Vries, approve or disapprove?
Approve.
Mr. Frederickson?
Approve.
Commissioner Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Hunsicker?
Approve.
Commissioner Keith?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
And Vice Chair Shores?
Approve.
Thank you.
Okay, normally we would be having consideration of public comments, but due to a new system being implemented and new to us tonight, and it wouldn't be fair for the general public to have any discussion on anything. So during this time, we'll have to skip this to be fair to everybody and then to the general public. But if anybody in the audience does want to comment on any agenda item, you may so do tonight. But anything else we'll have to bring up on the following Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Okay, Richard on reports. And first of all, Richard, before you start off, I understand it's your birthday today.
Who told you that?
So, we want to wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
Thanks.
I know you're not giving up the age, Richard.
Uh, see, so the, uh, the item that was, went before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council last month for the judicial centers, that was approved by the council at the last council meeting on May 1st.
That's it. Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
All right, well, um, that was, we're going on to new business, and we're gonna move Item D up. And, where'd it go? Okay, the, um, the review and discussing of cargo containers. Let me, um... Can I go back out of this? In any ways, we're gonna review and discussion regarding cargo containers, commission will review and discuss the current regulations concerning allowances for cargo containers used for storage in residential zones.
Thank you. All right, so tonight we're gonna start the discussion, so everything that I've written is open for discussion and has, I have flexibility on it. So, what we have is that we have a number of cargo containers being owned by the City of Kingman property owners, and they've been rapidly increasing over the last six months, it seems. We're getting a lot of calls and inquiries from property owners wanting to have cargo containers for storage in residential zoning districts. Cargo containers are low cost, provide security, endurable when used as a portable storage container, so they're attractive, um, to some people. So, there has also been an increase in zoning violations due to property owners in residential zoning districts obtaining the cargo containers for storage and not realizing that it was not allowed in their zoning district. The currently, our current allowances, cargo containers to be used for storage are not currently allowed in residential zones, cargo containers to be used for storage are allowed in commercial zones with certain conditions, cargo containers are allowed to be used as a building material in all zoning districts, cargo containers used as building materials have to meet the appearance criteria requirements in certain zoning districts, cargo containers used as a building material are required to obtain a building permit. Now I did some research, I did some research of what like Havasu and the City of Bullhead allow for cargo containers in residential zones, and found that they don't allow them at this point. There's a planning commission desire to allow cargo containers to be used as storage containers in certain residential zones with certain restrictions is pretty much why we're discussing this today. If so, there's some possible amendments to Section 26.820 that could be completed, which is specifically related to portable storage containers. Now, if we were to allow cargo containers for storage in certain zoning districts with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, such as RR, R120, R140, RMH20, RMH40, there were some allowances that I kind of gathered from several, several, like, uh, Bullhead, Havasu, and other places and came up with these possibilities. So, we could require storage containers to be located to the rear of the principal of the building on the property and behind a six-foot-high obscuring, sight obscuring fence, such as a block wall or solid wood fence, would require cargo containers to meet the setbacks of the underlying zone, would require the exterior of a storage container to match the primary structure, possibly paint, stucco, siding, or materials as recommended by the commission, to allow for the maximum size of a storage container to be 320 square feet, which is an eight-by-40, and only one storage container per 40,000 square feet or fraction thereof, could allow more than one cargo container on a lot if the total of the cargo containers is no more than 320 square feet in total per 40,000 square feet or fraction thereof, still prohibit storage containers from being stacked, would require a permit prior to placement of the cargo container on the property in order to allow staff to review if appearance criteria is being met and setbacks, could require that cargo containers used for storage only to be included in the calculation of the lot coverage, and require that any material stored in cargo containers can be subject to review and approval of the fire department. And the reason I did pick this lot size is this, the lot size we tend to get calls from, from people that would like them or already in the situation that they have them, half acre and up. So, we do have accessory structures versus, versus storage only. Now, these over here would be just storage where the cargo container is brought to the property and just placed in the, in the yard as is with the criteria of matching the home. When you're going to this version where there's actually a roof and door, or they put indoors and windows, then we're going into accessory structures. So that would be the difference of when we would look at the appearance criteria for one and the section regarding portable storage containers for another. And then here's some of the various sizes out there. Mainly, these first four is what would be allowed with some of the recommendations I proposed. With these 80 square feet is where you would be allowed to have more than one, but for a total of 320, which is what the larger ones are, appear. For clarification, if we allow cargo containers for storage only in residential zones with the above-mentioned criteria, they will need to match the primary building with some kind of paint, stucco, or siding, but that does not mean they need to be on a foundation or have a pitched roof. There are also portions of the current regulations related to cargo containers in commercial zoning districts that staff would like to further clarify, such as striking out the wording appear to be similar and harmonious with related to the exterior appearance criteria for storage containers in commercial zoning districts. The revised wording would state that as an alternative to screening the exterior of a storage container may be modified to match the principal building. This may be achieved through the use of paint, stucco, siding, and any other approved building material, but basically to be more specific of what we want. And then, also, we'd like to add, storage containers cannot be stacked throughout this section for consistency. Add, storage containers should not occupy required off-street parking, loading, or landscaping areas due to this actually being requested by property owners if they could. We've had a few requests for those. So for commission action, the Planning and Zoning Commission is asked to review my memo, which I provided, and you may ask staff to bring back more research, take no further, no more further action, or make a motion for staff to draft a text amendment to Section 26.820 of the zoning ordinance to allow cargo containers to be used as storage in certain residential zoning districts with certain conditions, and clarify current cargo container regulations in commercial zoning districts. And with that, I am open for any questions, and we actually, we have the acting building official here as well to answer any.
Any questions at this time, anybody?
I don't think I have a question, but I do have a statement. Didn't Planning and Zoning already review this and go over this in great detail?
Yep, excuse me, yep, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yep. Well, we had a cargo container, discussion go through about two years ago, but it was year and a half, and it was more so related to a situation with commercial at the time, and then that's when there was a approval to not allow cargo containers in any residential zones. So that's where that started. And I think even, if I remember correctly, even at that time, there was some discussion about maybe some half-acre lots or acre lots, but it didn't, it didn't go through. They just approved it without any residential zones.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have a question, I have a statement, and that's that I can say that as a realtor, traveling around showing houses on a regular basis, it, it doesn't look very appealing for the... Is that good? It doesn't look very appealing for curb appeal, or showing, you know, it, it does, when you're showing them, it, it looks tacky. And, uh, so it, it does, in my opinion, as a realtor, affect the neighboring properties. Just a statement.
Any, any further questions for Sylvia?
Sylvia, I did, on the, on the attachments you sent us, you have the Bullhead City, the Bullhead City codes in here.
Yes, right.
And then the next one underneath that is proposed shipping container regulation. Is that Bullheads, or that's what you're potentially...
Actually, that was, if it's very similar to mine, it was the Lake Havasu one, and that they were trying to move forward, and they're kind of watching what we're doing as well with that.
Okay, so that's Havasu's proposed?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
And I do have a question. So, the picture up to the left, is that, that's a cargo container that's been modified, correct? To the top left, is that what that is?
I, I did, yes, that was one I had pulled from all the various pictures. I mean, when you look at it closely, it doesn't really look...
Yeah, I, I agree with that on that one, I mean, 'cause that, but really, why does it look good? 'Cause you can't tell it's a cargo container.
No, it looks like a, a nice storage building that is conforming to the house. So, I mean, but they don't normally look like that in Kingman when I've seen them, so...
Any, any other questions?
I have a comment more than a question. I, I think that the public should have a right, or at least the availability of having cargo containers in R20 or larger zoning areas, simply because, you know, you have tack rooms and you have, some of these are using a property for farming and ranching, and, and they need a place more directed towards storage than these little tin buildings that you can buy through online ordering and stuff like that. So, yeah, storage containers absolutely should be allowed. I don't know how they ever got removed in the first place.
I have one more comment here. So, is there, can it be like based on zoning? I mean, maybe if he's, like Commissioner McCoy is saying, that would be more of an agricultural or horse privileges, maybe that might be different, but for all residential?
Yeah, I had mentioned previously in the discussion that it, it could be possible that it would be allowed maybe in RR, R120, R140, RMH20, RMH40, those are your larger lots. And that was just to throw out there to start the discussion.
Sylvia, if we, if we, uh, in some manner green-lighted it from a zoning standpoint in certain different zoning districts, would a subdivision plotted under a, whatever, R140 subdivision, if they had a CCA governing that subdivision, they could elect to, even though the general zoning plan allows use of it, but if they chose to have one direction in that subdivision, they could use a CCA to say, even though it's permitted from a zoning standpoint, we do not allow it in this specific subdivision?
Yeah, the subdivisions can record, and I'm more familiar with the CCNRs, which I think you're saying the same thing, or HOA, they can record that restricting them, but the city would not enforce that restriction, that would be strictly through their HOA. And we, we have those throughout the city, like some areas...
Yeah, but I don't think it's required to have an HOA for it, there's just subdivisions that have a, a CCNRs associated with it.
Right.
Okay.
There's a difference between a shipping container and a storage container, and is it the size?
Um, yeah, that's, for me, I'm calling them all shipping containers at this point, so...
Yeah, they're generally, I mean, just from an industrial purpose, they're, they're different lengths, and they're usually matched to...
And they're different gauge, right? They're a different gauge steel?
No, normally you have different lengths, so there's, and they're set up for truckload sizes, so 40-footers is pretty common ocean freight container, but the high cube, which she had on there, and they, once they call high cube, they're just taller.
It's taller, okay, that's what it was.
Like these, basically?
I know this has been a, an issue all the way through, for a long time. But the reality of it is, shipping containers, storage containers, cargo containers, however you want to them, they're just that, shipping cargo containers. And they, in my opinion, were not meant to be placed in your backyard. So, I'm not in favor of, of adjusting this to allow for them.
I'll second that.
Any further questions?
I would just like to say a comment is that there is a lot of, there's, there's a home up in the golf course that is not part of in a subdivision, it's township range in the section. And you have to be kind of careful, because they could get a cargo container right there at the golf course. You know what I mean? So, just saying that there is some that appear to be part of a subdivision that are not sub, part of a subdivision with CCNRs, so I am not for it.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Sylvia, sorry, one more, and then Gary, my bad. So, under the suggestion and comments, that's where you have it, these are just potential thoughts, where you have one and then A through I underneath there, some potential thoughts we can work from.
Yes, to start from somewhere, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna open this up to the public at this time, and please, anybody who'd like to speak on this matter, on this item, state your name, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Wes Maroney, and I would think you would like to limit it to the 20-footers in residential areas, at the most. There's no need for somebody to have a 40-footer in a half acre or less, maybe an acre, forty, the 40-footer. And I would highly suggest that you go with the, at least painting it. There are people that buy those little homes from Home Depot and stuff, and put them on the side, or they go to Sam's Club and they buy one of those tent frames, and after a short period of time, the canvas or the plastic on there goes, doesn't look real good. And they're allowed, the, the city allows anybody to build a little building out of wood, you know, as long as it's less than 200 square foot, I believe it is. And a lot of those look a lot worse than, than a steel container. There's, everything is in Kingman. You can go down any street and you can find any which way. On, on Eastern, there's a guy that put it in the backyard, and it's bright brown with the brown, the white trim still on it, and I think he needs, should remove it or paint it. But a lot of people have, a lot of the older homes have one car garage, and so they're not able to build, these things cost like 2,500 bucks delivered, and so they need a storage facility, but I would say the 20-footer painted would look nice, and that's what I would suggest.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Walter Klimak, and I'd like to encourage you to vote in favor of what Sylvia presented. I have some sheds on my property, I have horse privileges, City of Kingman, and it's an acre and a half lot, and the wooden sheds are just falling apart. They don't stand too well to Arizona sun. I have a bunch of hobbies I want to pursue, and the wooden sheds are not secure at all. We have increased amount of crime in Kingman, I have been brokerized before, and storage containers is an excellent idea for me. A 40-footer, a high cube would be perfect for me, so I hope that you consider voting in favor of...
What size lot did you say you had, sir?
I cannot hear...
What size lot did you say you had?
An acre. An acre and a half.
Okay.
Yeah. In Walapai Foothill Estates, which is kind of remote area, horse privileges. So I guess it matters where the properties are. If you are in congested area, I understand that probably ought to be restricting people, but, uh... So it probably ought to be considered where the property is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments from the public? Please state your name.
My name is Bob Eagle, it's like the bird. We've been after this for quite a while, a couple of years.
Yes, we have.
And thank you for your comment. People, everybody has their opinion of what is beautiful, pretty, ugly. I didn't particularly like the, what do you call it, that little gremlin car thing, it was pretty ugly. I didn't like my neighbor having that in his driveway, but he did. I, I don't see where we tell our neighbors how to live their lives. And that's kind of what we're doing here, it's, it's, it's a little, when you tell them they can't have a storage thing, and I asked the very question you did, like, where did this ever come from to begin with? Nobody could ever answer that. And the only thing I figured is it was pleasantries off of some other cities when they started putting all this together. But, the storage container itself is probably the most secure storage that you can purchase for the money. We have a lot of snowbirds here. When they leave, they like to have their stuff there when they come back, and it can be in the backyard. What are, what are the, what are the restrictions on, on Quonset Hus? Can you put them on any lot?
Uh-uh, no.
I mean, you can't put enough lipstick on that pig to make it look good, I don't care anybody says. But they are so efficient and they are so weather-tight, that you, you just can't get another, better bang for the dollar. And I don't blame people for having them, I really don't. And I, I would, I would like to have one myself, but, and, I don't live in the city, but I'm very interested in this, in case I do move into the city, that I have things that I would like to, you know, that I don't have, we don't have basements here to store stuff in, so what are you gonna do? Build another garage and another garage, and, you know, people can break into that, whatever, but that container, you better bring a torch with you if you're gonna get in that thing. And if you're in a neighborhood, I, I don't know about size of lots or anything like that, if you got an acre, or two acres, or three acres, or whatever it might be, but if, if you have horses, or if you restore old cars, or whatever it is, you need a place to store things, because the city doesn't particularly care for you to have the stuff out in the open like that, that they think is not pretty, so... Other than that, I don't have a lot to say about this, I just, I just think that when we get to the point of telling somebody that they can't have a red couch in their living room, or they gotta buy a certain car, or whatever, I think we're going a little bit too far.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Any further comments? All right, I'll open up the discussion amongst us. I know we've been down this, down this road before for a long time, we've had three, four workshops. We pounded our, racked our brains on this, so I think we're gonna go for round two of a nine-inning game here, so...
Well, I'd like to say I like them, I think they're really neat, I wanna get a couple of them out and wick you up, on my property out and wick you up, 'cause I, you know... So I, I think they're very good, I mean, they're secure, you know, they're nice, good steel building, and they're very affordable, I have to agree with Bob and Walter on the cost.
I think this is something that you were on Planning and Zoning, it was discussed for months, am I not?
If not you.
And you guys came up with a plan and put it into motion, and that's what we're looking at today. And that was only done two years ago, correct?
Or less.
Or less.
Or less. And, and we addressed commercial and residential.
Right, and we just readdressed the commercial, and council left it as it stands. We, it did not get changed, correct?
It, it is still the same.
Okay. With that said, and the amount of time, with that said, and the amount of time that has been put into this process with the workshops, and the feedback, and the discussions, I am not in favor of reopening this topic again at this time, I think it needs to stand.
Logic would dictate to me that if the general public is asking, why can't they have a shipping container as storage, then it seems that obvious that other commissions, for lack of a better term, screwed up. People want these, people should have the ability to have them, and these are far superior to the little tin buildings and the wood sheds. They're more secure, they, they are absolutely more affordable, um, far better built. And personally, I, you know, I don't see that, because some of us don't like the looks of them, that they should be banned from any residential use, I, I think that's unreasonable.
I, I have mixed feelings about that, because as, in any individual in the city that moves into a tract home, you, most people will typically take pride, and you don't want to see junk being brought in, and one man's junk is another man's treasure. But as, as I, three years ago, was looking in... But as, as I, three years ago, was looking in, in to move into or buy a home in Havasu, they have no ordinances preventing anybody from, from their front yard all the way to the back of putting containers, trailers, trash. And that was a turnoff for me. And I would think most citizens in this community would be a turnoff to them. Now, now what, what we describe as one, like I said, one man's treasure versus, you know, one man's junk. I, I think when you get in, in the 10,000 square foot lots and smaller, I don't think anybody, because you're so close to your neighbors, I don't think people wanna look at a storage container sitting in someone's backyard. It's bad enough looking at some of these super tall probably sheds, but that's allowed. Like, like Lori stated, and I believe Charmaine, these containers are for one purpose only, containers. They're made to be hauled on a ship. They're made to be hauled on a truck. They're made to be brought to the port unloaded. And unfortunately, because of the situations in China and whatnot, that there's a glut of these, they're, they're being forced now into the communities and the cities. Because what do we do with these? But I mean, that's, you know, that's my thought, but, you know.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with Commissioner McCoy from the standpoint of the, the subject's in front of us because there's interest from the public, it's been brought up. So I'm, I'm not in favor of, of passing on it. I mean, it's here, it's gonna come up. We should, that's what we're, we, we should have to deal with it. So on that one, I'm, I'm with you on that one to, to let's open Pandora's box here again and take a look at it. Obviously, it's taken a bit of time. But I appreciate the comments from the public. Thank you very much. I always like to hear from the public on thoughts on difficult issues. I agree with the last gentleman from the standpoint that everyone's got an opinion. I mean, you got seven people sitting up here. We all have different opinions on, on what we like, what we don't like. And I think every property owner, you, you know, some people like red, some people like blue. There's different colors. It's just an opinion on what people think. So nobody's right or wrong on that particular subject on what looks good. That's in the eye of the person. So I think it's difficult to say, okay, your neighbor puts one up. All the things been identified, great storage, it worked for him. You can run a shop out of it. That's all, that's all positive. And then you got neighbor living right next door and they're like, I hate that. I can't stand the look of it. So who's right on that particular one? I do think what you just hit on there, Gary, about a turnoff though, people don't tend to, most people don't tend to pick up their residence and move it on a daily basis. It tends to be a long-term decision you make. And I know for my family, as we moved into the Kingman community and we're unfamiliar with it, we picked a particular area where we thought we would be comfortable and happy and we had reasonable expectations, reasonable, on what the, the neighborhood would look like. So I'm, I don't wanna block people from having an opportunity and a choice to be able to treat their property and have the services and things they'd like to have on it. But at the same time, I wanna be respectful to other people around there that maybe that's something that they don't want in that particular area, which is where my CCR question came up. I think if you move into an area and you reasonably expect that that's an option that could be there, okay. Well, then if it comes up, it comes up. But if, I also think there's, because there's probably 50/50 on the opinion on the subject, it's not bad to say there's areas where you could reasonably not expect to have that because that's not something that you yourself have, have an opinion of a positive nature on. We have them at work. I just bought four more. I approved the PO last week for four more used for storage. But out in Peach Springs, I have no neighbors. So there's no one to offer an opinion to the business on whether that they aesthetically like it or not. I don't think my neighbors in particular would enjoy if I stuck one in the backyard. But again, that's just a, that's a personal opinion. So I think we should deal with it. We should come up with something here. Just trying to figure out the best way to balance both worlds on what it is. Respect people who'd like to have them, give an opportunity to have them. And at the same time, respect people who don't want to see that. And that's, that's just, everyone's got a different opinion on the subject.
I would think the easiest solution on this would be if it's agriculture or rural residential or horse privileges, that would be an expectation that you would see one of these containers.
Yeah, I'd agree.
And they should be allowed there. They shouldn't be banned. So allow them in that type of a zoning and ban them anywhere else.
Cause I, I think in the diagram it's shown to everybody. I believe that we were talking there at least one acre, one acre lots.
Half or greater, 20,000 feet or more.
Yeah.
Or just like you said, horse privileges. You're not gonna do anything less than a half acre anyways. There's some grandfathered half acre lots out there, but most of them are one acre if there's horse privileges. And then I think over by the freeway, there's some horse privileges half acre. But I think if you did open it up to leaving it with horse privileges, I could see that on something with horse privileges without a doubt. You know, cause that's really ultimately like a tack, you could use that for a tack shed or whatever.
You know, and I think something like that, when you're describing that type of use and, and location and, and more rural opportunity, you probably could throw one out there and you, you don't have any neighbor around to say anything. So probably don't have as many, or potentially you wouldn't have as many requirements on aesthetics at that point. Cause who are you being aesthetical for? The bird or the elk running on by, right? You know, and maybe there's, maybe that's a, a way to think about it. If you're in a more densely packed neighborhood or subdivision, maybe there's a much higher bar to clear from an aesthetic standpoint. Cause honestly, I, despite my, my personal opinion on the subject, that picture up there in the upper left that you showed, not on this one, but the one you had with the, the. I'd have to probably scrutinize and go knock on the wall to tell that's a container. So how could you reasonably say that that's poor from an aesthetic standpoint? So because of that, maybe there's some way where.
Yeah, I mean, if it.
We have different aesthetic requirements based on what the, what the makeup of the, of the property area is. I don't know, and that might be getting too complicated, but that.
Cause that has to be engineered. Because a C container, they're all engineered. And in order to pitch the roof and to change out the door, all of that requires engineering plans.
Right. And really, out of those four pictures, the only one that I think you could obviously say is a storage container is the upper right. The others all have some level of, of aesthetics that potentially some people would be okay with. So I, I don't know. Maybe that's, that's another way to do it is having, based on the different various zoning we have, rural versus resident, or, or, I don't know, still rural residential, but the more rural residential versus the more smaller areas, maybe there's a different, a different criteria.
Is Sylvia, is the Walupai Foothill Estates, those are all half acre?
One acre.
One acre.
One acre. So those are all allowed to have horse.
Not all of them.
No, no, not all of them. There is a big mix up there. And the CCNRs, there is CCNRs there.
Correct.
Sorry.
And I think, you know, that's another, that's another potential way through. If you, if we change something on the subject, maybe you would see some CCRs revised potentially. To say, okay, that's great. You green lighted it from a bigger standpoint, but the, the community owners in this particular area by overwhelming majority don't want it, change the CCRs to block that. I don't think there's.
Block it, there are no way to enforce it. Most don't, don't have, they're not paying dues.
True, we're not. I mean, we have one for our state, it's not paid.
Right.
I don't have a lot to say on whether or not we should allow them or not. But I guess I would just like to put a comment out there that as someone who is relatively new to Kingman and has spent most of her time in New York and Chicago and places like that, it is not unrealistic to not allow storage containers. Like most places that are at all nice would never allow a storage container to be there. They just wouldn't allow it. Whether or not people wanted it or not, they would need to put in a shed or, you know, something that, that looked better. Or, you know, I mean, if you're talking about the storage container that's made out of wood and mahogany doors over there, I mean, it doesn't even need to be a storage container underneath all that. But I don't think, it, it all depends on what kind of area you wanna create. I mean, if you want to create an area where people can have storage containers, I mean, that is definitely available. But if you don't want to have storage containers, it's certainly not something that other people would allow as well. I mean, a, a lot of towns that are trying to improve would never put a storage container in an area like that.
Is that allowed? Or we, we already had their comment.
I, I think the opportunity for comments is closed.
Okay, sir, we can't, sorry. Well.
Well, I don't know, I kinda agree. If it's horse privileges and you have like 40,000 square feet or above, your neighbors aren't right on top of you. You know, and if it's placed to the back part of the property, not up in the, the street area, you know, where you utilize it in the back part of the property, I think that would be okay. But in a small 10,000, even 20,000 square feet lot, I just don't think that the aesthetics is there, especially within the city limits.
If, and, and like Terry brought up, that top left picture, I, I could see that in a residential be allowed because now we're changing, we're making it look like the sheds you can go buy anywhere in town, in Golden Valley, whatever. I, I can see that.
Right, you still get the structural integrity and the security.
Yes, you get everything, everybody wants here. And we're, and we're, and, and, and we could, we could make that into certain lot sizes. You could allow that with stucco or wood siding and, you know, and some sort of a roof if someone so chooses wants to go that avenue, I could see that. I, I can also see containers in, in the horse properties that it's allowed in town. I, I could, I could see the benefit of that because it's, you're, you're not, you're not confined into a tract where I think most people in a tract, like Terry brought up, we don't pick up our homes and move. We're stuck here 10, 15, 20 years, our life, whatever. And everybody wants to drive home, I think, to a beautiful community and a beautiful tract. They don't like to see rundown stuff. And I think as us commissioners, I mean, we're, we're the voice for the city and, and we listen to what everybody says. But we gotta, we gotta think of the future here too when we're discussing this. You know, what's best, not for today, but what's best for tomorrow. Because what we're discussing today, this might be obsolete.
And can I ask a thing? Isn't this already, the one to the left, isn't that already approved materials anyways? I mean.
The bottom left?
The top left. That's already approved material, so that's not even the discussion, right?
Commissioner, so then it would be considered an accessory structure and would fall under the development appearance criteria? Kind of what you're suggesting? When it's an accessory structure where you're adding, you know, making it match the home so that you would add the roof and all the other criterias as if it was a new detached garage coming in? That is where that is falling. Just to clarify so that we know what the horse, the zones for the horse privileges are, it's the RR, R140 and RMH40. Those are the zones that would have the horse privileges at this point.
So one acre and larger.
Correct, right. And that can be, we can address proposed tax amendment that way. And then I'm, I'm understanding too that if it was in a lower, lower acreage zoning district, that they would have to follow the appearance criteria in section 26, make it specific to that. And then we, we were proposing that they all have permits so that they would be monitored so that when we, they do come in, we'd be able to see if they're meeting the appearance criterias for either section.
That's good.
I don't know that I would like the one acre limit. I mean, I live on an acre. And if my neighbor put a storage, I mean, container in their backyard, it would be ridiculous. I mean, it's not, like, you could see it from everywhere. I mean, there's nothing you could do to hide it unless they still wanted to, you know, put a fancy structure on it. But, I mean, that's an acre lot, an acre's not that big.
Yeah, Commissioner, and we did put some requirements in there for requiring like a six foot wall, a solid fence or wall versus a, a clear chain link or have it match the home. And those are things that can be modified as we're talking about it. I too live on a R140, but the CCNRs are not likely to allow me to have them. So there are some other things that the city wouldn't, I guess, go after because we don't, we don't enforce CCNRs. But there are other measures that would probably keep that out of that area.
Yeah.
Sylvia.
Yes.
In some of those, you get up into the foothills and the CCNRs. And like I said, it's really hard to enforce if it doesn't have, you know. But if I remember correctly, those CCNRs are set up that if they are to build outbuilding of any kind, not only do they have to be fit the easements, but they also have to be made of the same materials that the house is made of. The roofing needs to match.
Correct.
The siding needs to match, the color needs to match. Am I not correct on that?
Ours does.
Some of them. Someday, I'll start.
Yeah, Commissioner, at this point, I'm only speaking from my own. I believe that's what it says.
Okay, alright.
And every, like I just said, there's quite a few people on our particular street who have added, they all look exactly like the primary residences.
Right, right.
So you're talking residential one acre.
I think that's R140, I think it's R140.
It's R140.
Yeah, I.
Pen vond of zoning.
Yeah.
Sylvia, I like a lot of the things you put in here under one. I know it's A through I and you have a good bit. I think that's, I, I do think we have to tackle the subject. I do think we have to, you know, cause it's, it's here, it's in front of us. So again, I'm kinda thinking maybe, I open this for comment, maybe not as restrictive on RR. Maybe a little less restrictions on RR. And then getting a little more aggressive on the requirements. Still allowing them, but pretty aggressive on the requirements when you start getting down into the R120s in terms of sizing. Actually, I'm probably in the standpoint, I'd like to see pretty aggressive requirements in every one of them except RR maybe.
Commissioner, to clarify, so then if I brought something back, it's what we're saying is that the next time I could type it up as for, like what I did already with RR, R140, RMH40, and then with the half acres, make it meet appearance criteria versus like more like an accessory structure.
RR sit on their own.
Right.
Then you have the R140s, RMH40s. I think the only maybe potential difference between those and the 20s would be maybe the size. Maybe you allow a 40 footer on an R140, but you're the 20 footer max on a, on R120 for the smaller sizes. Just a couple of thoughts around that. But I think all of those, those four other zonings, pretty aggressive on the aesthetic requirements. And I do like what you have in here about requiring a permit prior where it can be reviewed.
Exactly.
Yes.
So, you know, that way hopefully, and again, I understand what Commissioner DeVries is saying about enforcement and CCRs, but hopefully before they got that permit to place it, a chance for the, the city staff to review those ones and make sure the aesthetics are in fact at whatever we come up with.
And in greater than, or in R140 or greater, I don't see an issue with a 40 foot, nine foot high.
The size.
High cube container.
Still talking horse privileges here?
Probably be difference of opinion on that, but I think let Sylvia bring it back and then we can debate that one at the, at the next one.
And are you still dealing with horse, are we still for horse privilege property? Is that correct?
I, I didn't have any thoughts on horse privilege.
You're talking about foothills.
Well, let me just put it in layman's terms. Anything over two acres, yes. Anything under two acres, no. You know, I mean, basically. Horses and some grandfathered in are under, you know, eight and under an acre up there, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
But those are already established and probably already have their tack sheds in place. If they've already got horses.
Yeah, they may want more.
I know, I haven't made a motion yet, so I apologize. I don't wanna make a motion unless, they're discussing.
Well, I think at this time, aren't we just.
Asking the director.
Yes, yes. So, and she's gonna get, get back with us and then we could, so I guess a list too from there.
And you may or may not wanna tie it to zoning. Or you can bring us both options. One for horse properties, one for non-horse, you know, these golf course estates and, and the Walupai area where it wants acreage but doesn't want horse privileges.
So Chairman and Commissioners, I'm, I'm, so what I'm understanding is going ahead and bringing back some more discussion, bringing it back as a discussion item next month. uh, bringing it back as a discussion item next month and separate out kinds of the horse properties and then the zoning districts from below and go with that and see how that comes out.
Aesthetic requirements.
Yes, aesthetics.
Yes, and I think, yeah, and in the, in the smaller, the ten thousand square foot lots and smaller.
Well, they shouldn't even be considered in twenty thousand or more.
I think it's simpler.
Yeah, I think anything under twenty should not be allowed at all at the lots or just too small.
But even the twenty thousand square feet, I think that we need to put a size limitation on it and aesthetic change.
Right.
Agreed. So I, I think Sylvia, you got a good framework here. Just keep working from it for next one and then there'll be another, another opportunity for people to prepare from a public comment standpoint before it comes back next meeting. So people that have additional comments they'd like to make on it, there'll be another opportunity for us to hear those comments.
Okay.
Before we lock anything down.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thank you Sylvia.
Well, um, new business abandonment case AB18 dash zero 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 three. A request from Paul J. Wassel, applicant and adjoining property owner for approval of vacation abandonment of the southerly two point eight feet of the right-of-way for East Oak Street and the westerly two point eight feet of the right-of-way for North Third Street located adjacent to lots thirty and thirty-two, block seven of Kingman Townsite, section twenty-four, T point two one N, R point one seven W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona. The right-of-way to be abandoned is approximately four hundred ninety-eight square feet and is located between the back of the existing sidewalks on Oak Street and North Third Street and the property lines of the above described property. The abandonment is requested to facilitate the development of the adjacent property.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. This is a request to abandon portions of East Oak Street and North Third Street. This is a location that's, um, next to the applicant's property at the southwest corner of North Third Street and East Oak. Uh, this is a, uh, current zoning map showing the subject site. Current site, current zoning is R, R2 on the site as well as the properties to the west and to the north. With one exception, there's a, one property is on C1. Across the street, you have the American Legion. Also, Veterans Resource Center is proposed within the Arnold Plaza northeast of the site. That location is C2. Uh, the property across the street is Zone C2 as well. Uh, there's a business and also a vacant house. And to the south of the alley is, uh, the Circle K. Uh, the area was planted originally in eighteen eighty-seven. It was the original townsite of Kingman. It was part of the original incorporation in nineteen fifty-two. Uh, and the area has been Zoned R2 since nineteen seventy-one. There were five small residential units on the property that were quite old, that were demolished two years ago. Um, there is a six-inch water line in Third Street is, and also a twelve-inch water line in, uh, the alley behind the site as well as a six-inch sewer line. The streets are fully improved that about the site. They have curb garden sidewalk. Uh, each, East Oak Street has a one hundred foot wide right-of-way while Third Street has an eighty-foot wide right-of-way. Uh, the property is generally flat, sloping to the southwest. It's located in flood zone X, which is between the, um, uh, which, which is outside the five hundred, five hundred year flood zone. And this map just shows the, uh, an aerial of the site with the surrounding utility lines. The green represents sewer and the blue purplish looking lines are the water lines. Uh, we posted the site April nineteenth, uh, notice was published in the paper. We sur- notified all the surrounding owners within three, three hundred feet of the site. Uh, there was one comment from the public that was received before the staff report was completed. The owner was mainly concerned with what may, may occur on the property and that any development that occurs would blend in with the site. It would meet the historic, be similar with the other historic buildings in the area. Uh, we did receive one comment after the report was completed and supported the redevelopment of the, of the site. Now, there were no objections to the proposal. We did receive some extensive comments though from the city surveyor and city engineer. So again, the abandonment itself, the purpose of it is, is to allow the, the adjacent owner to obtain additional property in order to construct three residential units. Um, the property is Zoned R2 and is six thousand two hundred and fifty-one square feet. The R2 zoning district allows one dwelling per twenty-two hundred square feet with a minimum of six thousand square feet needed for two units. So it's a bit below what you would need. You would need sixty-six hundred square feet for three. It's about three hundred and forty-nine square feet below that. So the applicant has requested the, uh, the abandonment of strips of the right-of-way between his property and the existing sidewalk, um, about two point eight feet in width. Uh, if that were done, that would amount to about four hundred ninety-eight square feet. And then if that were added to the, um, to the property, that would give him enough property for three units. Um, there was a survey done of the site. Distance between the property line and the sidewalk ranges between two point eight and three feet. So this is a little area in between property line and the back of the sidewalk. Like I said, between two point eight and three feet for the most part. Uh, city engineer did comment that he would recommend the minimum three inches be maintained between the edge of the sidewalk and the portion of the right-of-way that's vacated. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending that the right-of-way width to be abandoned not be any wider than two and a half feet. City engineer has also suggested the city obtain a five by five right-of-way triangle, which would be about twelve and a half square feet from the property owner, the northeast corner, to allow for the future reconstruction of, um, of sidewalk ramps in that area. The ones that are there now don't meet the current ADA standards. Um, the total area to be abandoned, if we were to do this recommendation with two and a half feet of right-of-way width and the right-of-way triangle, that would, instead of being about five hundred square feet, it'd be a little under four hundred square feet, three hundred ninety-four square feet, uh, which will be enough when combined with the rest of the property, for, for three homes still. So under section five one of our street policy, um, does state that any council resolution approving the abandonment of a right-of-way shall be subject to payment made by the applicant based on the property value, based on its fragmentation marketability and the public benefit. Also under the state statutes, um, it says that when less than the full right-of-way width is vacated, title vests with the abiding property owner. So the owner, the applicant, has estimated the right-of-way, right-of-way value at five dollars sixty cents a square foot. That's based on his purchase price of the adjoining property of thirty-five thousand square, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, so this would amount to approximately for three hundred ninety-four square feet, about two thousand two hundred and six dollars. So staff's recommendation is to abandon, and I won't read all that verbiage there, but it's essentially the two and a half foot wide strips along the property frontage of the, of the property in, in question here. And, um, the applicant would then also dedicate a five by five foot triangular area, twelve and a half square feet at the northeast corner of lot thirty-two for a future sidewalk ramp. Uh, and then the applicant and owner would also offer the city a payment for the net total of, of the abandoned area after the dedication described in condition A. And that payment would be based upon a value of five dollars and sixty cents a square foot of the abandoned area, which, which again, we're estimating at this point to be about three hundred ninety-four square feet. So that would amount to about twenty, two thousand two hundred and six dollars. And I'm just gonna put up, because a picture's worth a thousand words, I think. It's always easier to kind of visualize what we're talking about here. So on this aerial here, um, the existing property lines are heavier dashed line right here. And, uh, if this were to be abandoned, it would be sort of the gray areas that I'm showing here and here with the triangle for the dedication here at the corner. So the new property line would be this, this lighter dashed line here on the outset. This is just showing the existing four-foot wide sidewalks. Those are where the existing ramps are. The curb is on the outside here. And this is lot thirty, thirty-two, thirty, thirty-two, the, the two lots that are involved. So it just kind of helps you visualize what, what their recommendation is. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. The applicant is also here this evening.
Ah, okay. I'll save mine for the applicant then, because I read on here, Rich, that the, it says to change it to C2 zoning?
No, well, it, there's no plan to, to change the zone. The zoning will stay the same, it's gonna stay R2. I think that, that was a mistake on the application.
It was a mistake on the application?
Yes.
Any further questions, Richard? Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here would like to speak?
Paul Asell, if you have any questions. I'm planning on building three bungalows that are pretty much exactly like what's up the street about a block, so...
So homes for sale?
No, they're just gonna be short and long-term rentals.
Okay, homes for rent.
What the veterans across the street are gonna need.
Okay.
How many square feet are the homes gonna be?
Uh, between five and seven hundred square feet. One bedroom probably. That's what it's zoned for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any discussion?
No, I don't. I, mine was only gonna be on C2 that I read on there, but not here in the explanation mistakes, so I'm good.
I have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second. Um, any further discussion? We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner DeVries? The vote to approve?
Yes.
Chair Fredwickson?
Approved.
Approved. Commissioner Glass?
Approved.
Commissioner Hesiker?
Approved.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Keith?
Approve.
And Com- Vice Chair Shores? It approves, it's, it's confirmed. Approves. Message, motion carries, is what I'm saying.
All righty. Thank you very much. Um, new business rezoning case RZ18 dash zero 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 two. A request from T.R. Orr Incorporated, applicant and Joshua one point eight Investments LLC, property owner for the rezoning of certain property from R110, residential, single-family, ten thousand square foot lot minimum to C2 HMR, Walupai Mountain Road overlay district. The rezoning is requested to allow the development of a new commercial building. The subject property is located at twenty-six oh four Walupai Mountain Road and is two point seventy-two acres. The property is further described as a parcel B as shown in parcel Platts book twenty-nine, page sixty-six, recorded three five oh seven, at fee number two zero zero seven dash zero two zero five seven one, section nineteen, T dot twenty-one N, R dot sixteen W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, uh, again, this is a rezoning request to rezone from R110 to C2 HMR, uh, for a property located at twenty-six oh four Walupai Mountain Road. Uh, this is the zoning map of the site, um, located, um, between Jackson and Adams, just south of Monroe Street. The Walupai Quick Stop is to the west. The Veterans Administration outpatient clinic is to the east. Dollar General is northeast of the site across Walupai Mountain Road. Um, you have vacant property to the south that's still Zoned R110. Mostly everything else immediately around is, is Zone C2 HMR. Uh, the property itself is two point seven two acres. The general plan land, land use designation is community commercial. Uh, was part of the original incorporation in the city nineteen fifty-two. Residential zoning, um, has been in place since that time. The R110 zone was specifically, um, put in place in seventy-one. We have no record of any development occurring on the site in that, uh, over that time period. The property itself is gently rolling, slopes are at two to three percent from east down to the west. It's in flood zone X. The engineer did comment that grading and drainage report will be required at the time of site development. Uh, the property is accessed off of Walupai Mountain Road, which is a paved four-lane road with a center lane, curb garden sidewalk, and they, um, would be accessed by a new thirty-foot wide driveway on, on the site. Uh, this is just an aerial view of the site. Um, just pointing out that the, um, site itself is, has got water, uh, to the west and to the east. They will have to extend the water line across the frontage of the property. The nearest sewer is to, both to the south and to the north. Um, I believe that they're intending on bringing the sewer line up from using an easement across one of these properties to the site over here. I actually talked to the property owner of this site today and mentioned they, they had been contacted by the owner to do that. But in any event, they'll have to extend, extend the sewer to the site to serve it. Um, the site was posted with a zoning notice on April nineteenth. Uh, we ran a notice in the Kingdally Minor on April twenty-second. Uh, notified all the surrounding property owners. Uh, we haven't received any comments from the public. Been no objections from any departments or agencies. Uh, there are comments though from the city engineer and the staff report. So again, the applicant is intending on constructing a sixteen thousand square foot office building for one air, one hour air conditioning. Um, the C2 HMR district does allow contractor offices provided that there is no outside storage of, of construction equipment or materials. Development will need to comply with the design and site development standards of the C2 HMR district, including architectural design, as this district is not just a, a use district, it's also a design district. Preliminary plans appear to indicate that the front elevation of the building will comply. However, the sides and rear aspects of the building will need to be revised somewhat with additional parapet variations and some other architectural features to break up the long walls. Um, a preliminary site plan has been submitted which shows, um, the parking areas will meet the requirement that, in, in the case where you have at least forty parking spaces, fifty percent of those spaces have to be located to the side or to the rear of the building and not all in the front of the building. And it looks like this, uh, site plan that they've submitted meets that requirement. Also, signs will need to comply with the C2 HMR requirements. Um, only monument style signs are allowed in this district, six feet tall and thirty-five square feet in size, along with building signs that will reflect the architectural theme of the building. So this is the site plan, preliminary site plan that's been submitted for the site, uh, showing the driveway off of Walupai Mountain Road. And as I said, most of the parking spaces are either to the side or to the, to the rear of the building. And these are the preliminary building elevations. As I said, the north elevation which faces the road is in compliance with our district, but there need to be some, some modifications to the other sides of the building to meet our requirements in the, in the, in the district. Part of the requirements of the, anytime you rezone a property is that, um, you have to consider, you have to make findings of the following items before recommending approval. Uh, one is whether that the uses that would be permitted in the district are, um, are needed. I think you could make that argument by the fact that this is a contractor's office that could serve residents in, in this area, and this is a rapidly growing area of Kingman. The C2 HMR district also is, is really the most suitable district for its location in Walupai Mountain Road. It's a unique district to that, this area is, exists only exclusively along, um, Walupai Mountain Road between the railroad bridge and Seneca with a few gaps. This is one of the gaps that still exists, so it makes sense for this to be, um, under that zoning district. And it will also be compatible with the general plan, which calls for community commercial land use, uses on the site. And that's compatible with C2 HMR. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R110 to C2 HMR with the following condition, that in accordance with the requirements of the C2 HMR district, no exterior storage of materials or equipment shall be permitted on the site. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have and the applicants here as well this evening.
I have a question, Richard, just out of curiosity.
Sure.
How, how did residential end up right there on that particular area? How did residential end up right there on that particular area when everything around it on the frontage road is all commercial?
It's, whoops. What happened is that over the, well, initially, this area had, the original concept was that the the C2 HMR district didn't originally exist in this area. It was, there was an overlay, design overlay, but the original concept that was that not all of Wallapine Mountain Road was going to be commercially zoned. And so initially, you had like Wallapine Quick Stop and where the gas station is, Gas and Grub, and a few other spots were commercially zoned, and the rest of it was residentially zoned. And then over time, that's gradually filled in, and then we created the district itself. So this is one of the remnant pieces that just never.
It's never got changed.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So this is going to be for one-hour air conditioning?
They, I believe they're they're maintaining the building, yes.
So are they going to have their their company vehicles sitting there? Are they, we just kind of had a discussion.
I believe, I'll let the applicant answer this question for sure, but I believe they do have some garage doors in the back that they would be able to park in. Vehicles inside the building. I mean, we're not really too concerned with just vehicles parking as much as we are heavy equipment and storage of materials and things like that.
Any further questions, Richard? Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll open up to the public comment.
Don't actually have any comments, but I'm Elton Edwards from TRO. I'm the project manager on the project.
Okay.
I guess I will say that they mainly offer service, so they don't have a lot of huge trucks, vans, and they will be parking them in the back. That's why he wanted all that parking in the back, because monthly they have meetings. He's going to be consolidating his company for Mojave County.
Okay.
So that's the whole concept behind this project.
So most of their stuff is just the vans and service trucks?
Correct, yes. He's not, he doesn't really even do like new construction. He doesn't do much of it at all. He just service.
Alright. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll open this up for discussion. Excuse me.
Mr. Westmaroni? I like it. I have to drive up Wallapine every day, and I think it'll add tax dollars to the city, beautify the area, the veterans building. If this matches it and looks similar to it, you know, it'll just blend right on in, and it looks better than open weeds there. And it'll employ people, right? And so it looks to me like it's a win-win for everybody on this jobber. That's my opinion.
Alrighty now, any further? As I see no one else left. Open it up to discussion amongst us. Any?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I think it would be beneficial to the area. I mean.
I'll second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner DeBries?
Approve.
Commissioner, Chair Fredwickson?
Approve.
Commissioner Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Hensiker?
Approve.
Commissioner Keith?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
And Vice Chair Shores? Motion carries.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, the following new business, or I should say, we've discussed this in past. Item C, zoning ordinance text amendment case Z018-005. A city initiated request for a text amendment to section 2.000, 4.000, 5.000, 7.000, and 26.000 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Kingman, establishing a definition of and regulations for tiny homes.
Alright, good evening. Bear with me. There is a lot of text with this slide because there were so many different areas we were addressing with this. So I'll try to get through this as best as we can. Here we go. So April 10th, we did vote to move forward with text amendments to the sections you mentioned, to add a definition of, for tiny homes to the zoning ordinance, to not allow tiny homes in the RR RMH40, RMH20, RMH10, RMH8 zoning districts, to exempt tiny homes in the R2 zoning district from being a minimum of 860 square feet and have a minimum building width of 24 feet, and to allow homes to be built on 25 by 100 square-foot lots in the R2 zoning district, only as long as they are able to connect to sewer. So for the definition, I did do some various research. And so in section two, we'd like to propose to add the following. Kind of skipping around, let me just go back to the top. So the current minimum floor area for new single-family residences located in R1, R2, R3, R4 zoning districts is 860 square feet, according to section 26. The upcoming 2018 Appendix Q of the International Residential Code defines tiny homes as a dwelling unit, which is 400 or less square feet in floor excluding lofts. Coconino County adopted a tiny home guideline and defined tiny houses as a house smaller than 400 square feet, but not smaller than 200 square feet. So I recommended a definition of tiny home as a site-built house smaller than 860 square feet, since that's our current minimum in-floor area excluding lofts. Tiny homes shall not be smaller than 200 square feet, and tiny homes are allowed in the R2 and RMH6 zoning district only. For section 26, which is our appearance criteria, to exclude tiny homes in the RR RMH40, RMH20, RMH10, RMH8 zoning districts, and for tiny homes to meet the appearance criteria, staff considered the best method to accomplish this and proposes the following. In amendment 26, general development standards to require all new single-family homes and detached accessory structures built after July 5, 2018, to meet the appearance criteria and have a minimum floor area of 860 feet in all residential zones. Also, I then noted that tiny homes may have a floor area smaller than 860 square feet, excluding lofts, but not smaller than 200 square feet, and are allowed in the R2 and RMH6 zoning districts only. Also noted that the minimum building width for tiny homes may be less than 24 feet. For further clarification in section 26, while I was there, basically, we wanted to take the opportunity to clarify some language regarding the detached garages. The current verbiage is garages attached and detached, and carports that are not seen from the street shall be exempt from meeting the exterior appearance criteria has been endlessly confusing due to what exactly determines whether or not you can see a garage from the street or not. So while we're in section 26, staff recommends deleting that statement and making all new detached accessory structures in any residential zoning district built after July 5, 2018, to meet the appearance criteria. This criteria is clear and to the point. This revision would not apply to permitted storage sheds made out of cargo containers or portable storage containers. These would fall under section 26.820. But as we were talking, we had our cargo containers right before this discussion, so we know what we're actually going with that. In section four, residential multifamily, in order to allow tiny homes to be built on 25 by 100-foot lots in the R2 zoning district, I propose the following amendment. Add tiny homes as an allowed use in the R2 zoning district only. Add a column to the property development standards table to further clarify tiny home requirements. Add language to the table 4.310 to clarify minimum floor area requirements for different structures built in the zoning district, and add language that tiny homes may be built on pre-1945 25 by 100 originally recorded subdivision lots with the requirements that the tiny home be connected to sewer and can meet the setbacks. I did show, here's the table that I was talking about amending, and added a column for tiny homes, which shows the minimum lot size of 2,500 feet, 2,500 square feet, and minimum lot length and feet is 100. So it'd be 25 by 100, and still has the same maximum building coverage. I also added this for clarification to the existing table that has minimum dwelling unit sizes, because it has been somewhat confusing. But now that with this clarification, I'm putting, this table is specific to multi-dwelling units such as apartments, duplexes, triplexes, and condominiums located on a single parcel. Single-family residences must have a minimum floor area of 860 square feet, excluding tiny homes. And tiny homes might, must have a minimum floor area of 200 square feet. Now, here's the area we talked about before for the R2 zoning district. And here's the map that was requested to show what lots are still out there vacant and that have the possibility of having tiny homes constructed on them. All the yellows are vacant 50 by 100 and 25 by 100 lots with paved road, water, and sewer. So that's where the sewer is now. And then the reds are where there's no sewer. I did add some numbers on top of these lots just to show that there's some underlying either 50 by 100 or 25 by 100. So with the with the yellow, I basically came up with like 25 possible tiny homes that could be built on either the 50 by 100 or 25 by 100. And then with the red, it was about 18 of them, 19, 19 that's possible if they had sewer connecting to that. Then here, I just went ahead and tried to draw a little site plan because we were talking about the parking in the front a little bit last time. So did some research on what a common single-car garage is, and tried to play with that with far as, this is a 25 by 100-foot lot, and I added the driveway as a 20 by 12, which is, it's actually 20 by 12 and a half. And then here's 12 by 20 for one-car garage. And then put in a square, 300-square-foot tiny home, which is 20 by 15. And this was just so you can have a visual of what's possible, but it's all would be with the design of whoever's doing it. And then for section five, in the residential manufactured home zoning district, I propose amending section five to allow tiny homes in RMH6 only. And then there was no text amendment needed for section seven, rural residential. In summary, the proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance defines tiny homes as any single-family residence with a minimum floor size of less than 860 square feet, but not smaller than 200. Allows tiny homes in the R2 and RMH6 zoning district only. Allows tiny homes to be constructed on 25 by 100 lots in the R2 zoning district as long as the home is connected to sewer. Requires tiny homes to meet the appearance criteria in both zoning districts. And staff recommends to, propose to amend sections two, four, five, and 26 to establish the definition and regulations for tiny homes. And if you have any questions for me, please, please do ask.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I want to thank you for all the time you have put into this. This is, I think, a movement that's going to move forward in every city across the nation. And getting ahead of the game, I think, is really important for our community. But you have done an incredible job of simplifying it and bringing the information to the table. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
No, I agree. I get asked, I get asked a lot throughout and about when I'm out, you know, why were we even discussing tiny homes? And I try to explain to them that, hey, you know, this is possibly the future of most cities. And since we don't have any regulations and guidelines been in place, you know, it's our opportunity now to, you know, get this in the forefront for everybody. And we've thrown it out to the public and got comments and listened. And I true dearly appreciate, I know, the time and effort you do put into this. It's it's a never-ending battle, and as I said earlier, you are a superwoman, so.
Oh.
No.
Thank you.
I appreciate the graph. I think that was very helpful for me to understand where.
Now leaving him breathing tiny homes in cargo containers.
I have a question.
Yes.
For you. Any lots that were pre-1945 and zoned in R2? Now, say somebody comes back in and it was already pre-zoned, 1945, and they want to change, and the zoning on the pre, on the 1945 is not an R2. Say it's an R1. How would, how would you handle that? Would it go under like a special use permit for the zoning, for it to be allowed to be built in that section? Or does this text amendment suggestion, does it just keep it like in R2 zoning? Or the, you know, the R6 zoning?
Well, Commissioner, if I'm understanding the question, if somebody has a property that's zoned R16 and the lots were recorded, I'm just using a random zoning. Pre-1945, and they wanted to do a tiny home, which is not allowed, say, on R16. I don't know where this property is at this point, it's hypothetical, but anybody can propose a rezone. But then that rezone would have to be reviewed, as we do now, basically. And I mean, if this spot zoning, I don't know if it would go through. So you do have a point that that's, that possibly somebody could, adjacent to the property, propose a rezone, but I don't know if that would happen.
Yeah, because there is a lot of other, you know, lots and, you know, in different parts of Kingman that because of this, pre-1945, the lot sizes are 25 by 100.
I would think, though, that, so again, Sylvia, to clarify your answer, right, it would still have to come before this commission for the zoning change to happen.
Yes, it would.
And hypothetically, if there was a concern on a tiny home being built on that one, you could approve the zoning change with and put a stipulation on it, but you can't build a tiny home on that lot?
That could be.
If you had a concern to that particular.
Yeah. So so far, the majority that we've seen this, like where you're saying, there's a lot of R16 that have those underlying 25 by 100s kind of down eastern, right, over that area. And and most of them are building the the single-family homes, and that just seems to be the trend that they're doing over there. I'm not so sure they're wanting to put a tiny home over there, just by. Yeah, I know there's always that 1% possibility.
Because I know Golden Gate has a lot of, has, I think, has quite a few 25 by 100s that are just sitting there that we hope that a neighbor wants to buy them, but otherwise, they just sit there.
Yeah. Commissioner, I think we can only try our best to limit to the areas that we've discussed. And we have the R2 mainly downtown. We have some RMH6 right across the tracks and by Caromacy, but.
Take it case by case.
Yes.
If I'm correct, Sylvia, the gentleman earlier tonight on the case with the easement, if I understood his answer correctly, he said he was wanting to build 500 by 700 square foot.
Yes.
Single bedroom, one bedroom, 500 square.
It's because it's RM8 already. It's RM multiple.
It's R2? It's already R2.
It's already zoned.
So it's okay already?
Basically, he was built.
You just heard a guy tonight.
I do have one question about the distinction between site-built or mobile. There is none that's 200 square feet, be it on a frame or be it site-built.
I know that what we have right now is that if it's on wheels, that if it's a tiny home on wheels, basically, that'd be considered like an RV. But we're requiring site-built tiny homes at this point.
So the 200-square-foot?
Minimum.
Minimum is site-built?
Yes.
I believe everything needs to be site-built, as I think Sylvia and Keith explained to us, that anything on it, as I asked that question to, if someone was to bring in on a trailer or on a frame and then offload it and bolt it down to the concrete pad, it would be considered an RV, and that would need to be bonged into the mobile home.
Because the one on the right, I believe, is probably trailer-mounted.
Probably.
And don't you just, in opinion, you don't believe 200 feet is a little too small?
I don't have actually a personal preference on that. I was pretty much gathering the average numbers that I was seeing while conducting the research. There was actually another county that was even smaller. So I was trying to come up with a reasonable number, be like, because I think it was like 160 that another, another county had or city.
There was a 160.
Okay.
I can't remember if it was Pima or, yeah, Coconino, I think.
It seemed like there was an average that had 200 as a minimum.
Alrighty, thank you.
I have a question for you. Under the.
Under the section where you proposed like the blue additions and the red deletions.
Oh, right, right.
It talked about, if there's a section about running gear, and it says, "Any device used to transport a dwelling to the site of installation, including the hitch, wheels, axles, shall be detached from the dwelling as part of the installation procedure." Doesn't that mean it can be built off-site?
Yeah, let me catch up with you, Commissioner, but let's see, which section was that under?
It's underneath the red garage carport patio cover, there's a running gear section.
Okay, so, Commissioner, that's just existing language already in the development criteria standards there.
Doesn't that mean they can build a tiny home then, off-site, and drive it on, and then just take off the wheels?
It does, it does sound that way, but I.
It may be, it could be a modular, because a modular is considered a site-built home built somewhere else and brought in on a solid foundation.
Axles.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, actually. I'm pretty sure with our tiny homes, we have stated that it has to be site-built within the various parts.
So, they couldn't point to this as like a loophole and just drive it in?
Right.
You can drag it in, but it's considered a site-built home put on a solid foundation, which is a considered site-built, it's not a mobile home, if that's what you're referring to, it wouldn't be a mobile home.
It has to be on a.
It has to be on a concrete foundation, a solid concrete, which a mobile home isn't.
Right.
So, it's still considered a site-built home? Stick-built, stick-built.
Any further?
Commissioner, thank you for.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think we had, again, I'll echo what the fine lady said over here with all the work, I really appreciate it, but I think everything here looks to be reflective of the last discussion we had last month and where we left it with the direction back, so.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
No idea, it's just a public comment.
Is? Any comment? Public? All righty.
I think I have a little bit of confusion, a little bit, a little bit of confusion. I just was clarifying, I, and I, I say thank you to Sylvia too, and I'm not trying to confuse anything, but would, with that, it would be open to the 2,500, I mean, 25 by 100 lots being rezoned, like, all over? To, trying for rezone all over?
I.
So, as with, I keep getting shocked.
Nothing you can do.
As with other rezones, the rezones, when they come in, we have to see if they comply to the general plan land use designations, as well as what's surrounding the area they want to rezon the property in.
Right.
So, it, it, you can't, it really can just spot zone, there's some layers of protection that we'd have to see.
So, you get a layer of defense first at the staff level, and if it passes that layer of defense, and it still comes here.
Correct.
For consideration of.
And notification to property owners as well.
And really, the only two areas are downtown and behind the hospital?
Those are the majority of areas that.
Half of seven.
Yes.
Would it be in our best interest to raise that to 300 square feet as a minimum versus 200 square feet? Thinking about the average single-stall garage, how many square feet that is, are we?
I was kind of thinking 400 feet myself.
I'm okay with that even better.
But that's going to be kind of hard to build on a lot, with the setbacks and everything. They would have to go up.
12 by, 12 by 30 is 360 square feet, and so you could easily fit that on a 25-foot lot, so.
What was that?
This is a 300 square foot, so it's 15 by 20, on a 25 by 100 lot, just for.
So, that has.
A visual.
That description there, that has more than 15 feet setback from the, or you.
No, it's the width that's the problem. You get the 15 wide, and put the 5 in the 5, so if you start going with bigger minimums, you have a, if something looks like a cargo container length in there.
Exactly. Long and skinny and tall.
So, that was 15 feet?
That's, this is a 15 by 20, yeah, this is, 15 this way, 20 this way, 5 on each side, we have a 20 front setback here, and then this is where your 15 is.
So, it looks like there, there's a, there's a yard.
There is a yard. Yeah, and this was just an example too, they could be pushed back more.
I think we need to look at the 300 square feet and not go down to 200 square feet. It's my opinion.
Any further questions of Sylvia? Open it up for discussion amongst us.
So, we have 300 square feet on the table for discussion.
Exactly. Thanks, Terry.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, 200 feet is just.
It's smaller than a garage.
Yes, it's not realistic.
The walk-in closet.
And I'm not sure 300 feet's enough, but I've, you know.
Well, I guess who are we to say what someone wants to live in too? I scratch my head when I, we want to watch these TV, but, you know.
Yeah, I think Sylvia highlighted too, that from her research, 200 appeared to be a common number, but also, I think on those couple that brought up there, there's, there's two threes and fours in there, so, guessing that thought, 300's kind of split in the middle between them, I'm not, I don't really have an objection one way or another, I don't.
What about the length size? You know, is, what if they say, okay, the minimum's 300, what if they come in there on this tiny lot with house plans of, say, 1,000 square feet? Then what? Are we gonna, how far are we gonna allow them to go back? Where it doesn't look like it's a.
There is a maximum lot coverage, so.
I think she said 800.
Then it would have to go up.
Yeah, I think that chart's consistent for all the other, for the lot coverage size, but she had that on the chart there, 55%.
I think even though people are doing tiny homes because they're cost-effective, the further you go up, or the more you add, you're adding into a structure change that's going to cost more than what it's worth, so I'm not really worried about that at this point.
So, are we looking at making a minimum of 300, or leave it as, and if we do?
Yeah, I think Sylvia, if we chose to do that, if we went with 300 instead of 200, we could still make a motion, I guess, in theory, to approve what you have written, with the only change being the 300.
Okay, I make a motion to do the 300 and accept what she's put together for us based on what we have discussed in previous meetings.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Sandy?
Commissioner De Vries?
Approved.
Commissioner Fredrickson? Commissioner Glass?
Approve.
Commissioner Hensiker?
Approved.
Commissioner Keys?
Approved.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
And Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Under, okay, new business, discussion regarding future joint com, joint commission meeting date. The commission will discuss possible dates in June to hold a joint meeting with the Historic Preservation Committee. The joint meeting will be to discuss common goals and ideas both, both committees have, and how to accomplish them together. So, I guess we need to open up our calendars and what's.
What days do they normally meet on, Sylvia? Don't know, Sandy?
Thursday.
We have their meetings. Hey, we have their meetings. What is that, the?
They're ticking our calendars.
Now, their, their meeting is not, is a public, is it a public meeting?
Fourth Tuesday of the month.
Fourth Tuesday?
Yes.
So, is, what date is that? Does anybody?
June 26.
June 26?
What was that?
It's a city council meeting?
So, what about? What about the 19?
No, there's no council meeting that day. There's no council meeting that day.
Oh, there's no, not on the 26th?
No.
He was messing with us, is that what?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm asking, is it 26?
Oh, no.
Now, is that something we, would attend their meeting? Would be simpler?
Probably, yeah. I think that would be, and that we can get the, what our common interests are and discuss them.
And then bring it to July, right?
Yes.
And what time do they meet?
5:30.
5:30?
Yes, because we standardize our meeting at 5:30.
Yeah, we standardized that, didn't we?
Right here, yes.
Just double-checking.
Same place, yes. Okay, round circle.
Okay.
The 26th at 5:30?
Yes.
Council chambers.
Please.
Do we need to make a motion on this, or?
Not that it's super-important whether or not I'm there, but I'm going to be out of town, just so you know.
Fair enough.
Let's do it.
Is that something we need to make a motion on, Sandy? Okay, may I have a motion then, if everybody's in agreement for June 26 at 5:30?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Sandy?
Commissioner De Vries?
Approved.
Approve.
Commissioner Glass?
Approve.
Commissioner Hensiker?
Approved.
Commissioner Keys?
Approved.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approved.
And Commissioner Shores?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Any questions? I see no questions, Sandy? May I ask for a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Sandy?
That's, that's lame.
Commissioner De Vries?
Approved.
Commissioner Frederick?
Approve.
Commissioner Glass?
Approve.
Commissioner Hensiker?
Let me see.
Now they're just being mean.
Commissioner Key?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
We're doing this why? We're doing that why?
I think we leave it.
Yeah, I think we do.